Those that are going out to protest, Lord, we ask you put a hedge of protection around them and keep them safe, Lord. We ask that you keep law enforcement safe and everyone involved outside, Lord, that they would be safe and that this would be peaceful protesting in Fayetteville tonight and across the country. Lord, we ask that you watch over our president and the government. We ask that you watch over the governor of the Arkansas and his team. Lord, we ask that you watch over the mayor and his team here in Springdale, Lord, and keep them safe as we make decisions tonight in the best possible way, Lord, that we believe leads our city forward. We ask these things in your name, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I can adjourn the meeting after that because that's well said and I appreciate that, Mr. Covert. With that, I'll call this June 2nd, 2020 meeting to order. If we can do roll call?
Howard Austin?
Here.
Gary Compton?
Here.
Roy Covert?
Here.
James David?
Here.
Shannon Mueller? Peyton Parker?
Here.
Kevin Parsley?
Here.
Ben Peters?
Here.
Is he? Did he say here?
Yeah.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, he's there.
He can't sign these forms.
Okay.
Dale Tyler?
Here.
All right, any questions of the amendments for the May session? If not, seek a motion and a second for that.
Motion.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Have a... Have a motion by Dr. Compton, a second by Mr. Peters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. There are three items that are tabled for this evening that we will not hear this evening. The first one being one of the already tabled items, B-20-20 Kent McJunkin, 1904 Cary Place. We will also not hear a rezoning for R-20-19 Mansia Properties, 601 North Thompson. And then the last item is a board of adjustment, Tyson Foods, B-20-21, 2200 Don Tyson Parkway. Those are three items that we will not have on the agenda this evening. So first item that we have here in the tabled items section is W-20-06 Kami Scotts, 8750 East Brown Road. Waiver of sidewalk requirement presented by Kami Scotts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are requesting a sidewalk waiver for 8780 East Brown Road. We're placing the house there. As you can tell, there are no sidewalks out there.
Is it 8780?
There, the actual parcel number is listed on here. We're putting another house on there. The address for the new house is actually 8780 East Brown Road.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't normally... But there aren't any sidewalks in that location that, you know, payment in lieu of or can be an option if y'all want to go that route.
I don't know if there's any major plans for that street as far as...
I don't know of any plans for any work to be done on that street. Of course, you know, if development occurs out in that area, it becomes a different issue, but right now there are no plans that I'm aware of for improvement on that street.
Any questions or comments from the general public? Either anyone on the line? Okay. It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
This be a recommendation?
Yes, this is a recommendation to City Council.
Recommendation to City Council?
To grant the waiver?
To grant the waiver, yes, ma'am.
Recommendation to grant the waiver by Mr. Covert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Waiver passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next tabled item, we have a large scale 20-11 Williams Tractor, south of Don Tyson Parkway, east side of I-49. Also have a variance 20-18 of deviation of commercial design standards presented by Expedient Civil Engineering.
Jason Ingles with Expedient Civil Engineering. I believe that we've addressed, we came before the commission for the work session and addressed all the concerns the commission had, so with that on the table, any questions you may have?
Staff comments?
Okay, let's talk about basically what the variance have come down to. You have a variance to request to allow an area to remain gravel. And you've identified that area on the plans, which also showed at the meeting a layout of where tractors could be parked in that area. You asked for a variance on the building materials and the long distances of walls that do not have breaks. The front entrance on the tractor building has a building length that's 124 feet and there's no breaks in that, but that's right in the front. And on the backside of the buildings, you are doing metal in different configurations to give that break, so it doesn't look like a solid metal on the back. As far as the landscaping, you have used the same number that would be required for the foundational landscaping and all that, and it's been put in different locations. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And on the sidewalk from the 48th Street up to this location, instead of building it as a separate facility, you're widening the actual drive out and striping an area for pedestrians or bikers to use. I think we talked about at the meeting, there's probably not going to be a lot of people that ride or walk up there because it's a pretty steep incline. Okay? Did I miss anything? I think those are ones that we talked about. Katie, you want to talk about engineering? Are there any issues left with this project as far as engineering is concerned?
No, all drainage has been addressed and everything is good to go on this one.
Okay. You have to address all the other comments by utility companies and other city departments have to be addressed. The utilities have to be underground. Are you using a chain link fence with vinyl sliding? Didn't we change that and you're doing a different kind of fencing along there?
Along the part that's against residences, we did do a chain link with the screening because it's required for the zoning ordinance, but the rest of it is a pipe and rail system.
Okay, and you will have a security gate because the facility will be locked at night?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's part of that, okay? Let me see if there's anything else. Make sure I didn't miss anything. If you guys know something else that I didn't address, I think that's all we discussed at the meeting. I think we've covered all of the issues as far as those concerned. So that's what the variance is for deviation of commercial design standards would encompass.
Is that it? Okay, any questions or comments? To the commission.
Chairman, I'd like to take just a moment to thank Expedient and the Williams Tractor team for working with the city diligently to make the changes necessary to put this project on back on path, and we're excited to have them in Springdale.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. I mean, that's why we have those work sessions for, this is a complex project.
It was very complex.
And it was very beneficial, so we appreciate your patience and that whole piece there, so.
Kevin, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wanting to see if Roy would mind mentioning what he mentioned in the work session about the paving. I don't want to put him on the spot, but that was helpful for me and I think it'd be nice to have that in the record.
Sure. So what Peyton is referencing is there's a portion of this property that will remain gravel and not be asphalted. In normal business, we would have that asphalted or concreted, but the tire size, if you think about farm implements and the size of these machinery that'll be on this property, if you've ever been around hot asphalt when tractor trailers turn on it or tires turn in a tight radius, it rips the asphalt to pieces and it's something that costs a great deal of money for the property owner to have to maintain, as well as to have to re-put down time and time again, and it's not financially responsible for us to ask that of them since that's part of their property that they're putting in. So what I had told Peyton, what I'd mentioned to him was that my experience in my day job for roughly 35 years, 32 years, has been to put in these type of projects across the country with Walmart stores and have seen the different type of product and things that do work and don't work. So my recommendation at that time was that we allow the gravel because that is a better long-term use for this property for what they're putting on it than it would be to asphalt it with that type of vehicle on it.
Well, and they did increase the depth of the gravel that we're putting on it, so it's a substantial amount that they were putting on there. And they do have equipment there that if it gets reded or something, they can fix it with their own equipment or what's on the side, so it's a little bit unique situation with this one.
Yeah, I felt that it did create a hardship on the business after hearing those comments.
Any other comments? If not, be a call for the vote for variance.
Call for the vote?
Have a call for the vote for the variance by Mr. Covert.
And that's all of them together, the ones we just outlined?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
The variance passes nine zero. And need a motion on a large scale.
Motion on a large scale, subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Peters.
Second.
Second by Dr. Compton.
Covert, he's, okay. David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
You got them backwards, but you got both of them. You got both of them, they were just backwards.
They're both yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Covert...
I spoke out of turn.
Yeah, Mr. Covert had to step out to take a call. You can imagine he's handling stores in Chicago, so this did pass eight zero, so for the large scale.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Next tabled item is, I'm sorry, we're not hearing that one. Next section, rezon...
Sorry.
First, the rezoning is R-20-16 Arkansas Granite and Marble LLC, 2300 Turner, C-5 to an I-2 presented by Amando Carrillo.
Hello, everybody. We were here last year, I think, requesting a rezon of this particular address, hoping to turn it into an event center. Once you guys approve, which we were thankful for, we discovered that it was more than we were able to afford. I know Patsy's looking at me like, "I told you so."
I didn't say that. You just had more opportunities than you thought you were going to have.
That is correct. And so at the end, it was impossible. We weren't able to do anything. We got prices and all, and it was way more than expected. So right now, we just have the property there without any movement. We're hoping to switch it to an I-2 and do a warehouse or any other shop that we're able to rent out and make profit out of it.
Okay, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates light industrial warehouse use for this property. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Encourage the development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base and assure adequate land allocation for industrial growth protected from encroachment by non-industrial uses. And as you can see, most of the property around it is some type of industrial use. I-2 may be a little bit extensive for it, but until they know what they're going to use it for, I mean, it's, it'll give you the kinds of uses I think that you're looking for if you're looking for a warehouse. You could downgrade it to an I-1, but I don't know what y'all have in mind.
We, at this point, what we want is just to rent it out. If it's possible, a warehouse, it's fine. If it's a shop, you know, auto shop for maybe repairs, not exactly on mechanic, but more the outside of the auto.
Okay, if you go to I-2, you can't do automotive services in an I-2. If you downgrade it to an I-1, then you can do trades and services, which would be like plumbers and air conditioning or anything like that that has a shop and a warehouse. You can do automotive services in an I-1, but you can't do that in an I-2. An I-2 is really a heavy industrial area, more for manufacturing.
Okay.
And that's why I'm asking is you're limiting yourself by asking to go to I-2 more than I think you probably were considering, unless you've got an industry that's very, a heavy industry that's looking to move into it. My recommendation would be to downgrade it to an I-1, which you can do at the table if you want to.
Okay, perfect, then, yes.
And ask to downgrade it to an I-1 to give you a little bit more.
More.
And that is kind of a step down to the I-2 that's to the...
Yes.
To the west of it and gives you the opportunity to use the size of that structure a little differently.
Yes, then I-1 will be the best choice. Thank you for the recommendation.
Okay, so we're making a modification from C-5 to I-1 versus an I-2.
They're asking to downgrade it from an I-2 to an I-1.
Okay? Any other comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. To the commission. This be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Dr. Compton.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes. Rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item, R-20-17 CL George &amp; Sons, west of Jean George Boulevard, south side of West Sunsets, from A-1 to C-5 presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Do we have someone called in from McClellan?
Anyone online for McClellan?
Can you go see, Rick, can you go out there and see if there's anyone from McClellan that's... No, I see that Phillip's shaking his head.
Send it to the link.
Yeah?
Okay, we'll come back to this.
Okay.
Give them one more opportunity. Next item, R-20-18 Eden &amp; Elizabeth Tanguma, 3545 Julio Road, from A-1 to SF-2 presented by ESI.
We have ESI zoomed in? No? We have ESI zoomed in? Okay.
Yeah, this is Jason with ESI. I think Brandon Rush from my office is outside. And he was going to present.
He's coming. Okay. Okay.
Hi, I'm here, Brandon Rush with ESI, and the owner, Eden, is also here as well.
Okay. Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size, encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. We did get one comment in the mail or an email that was sent today asking, says, "My wife and I believe live behind the property, subject property and would like to request a privacy fence be furnished by the owners to be built behind the two new properties on or close to the back property line. If they cannot provide this, then we oppose this request due to the lot being too small for two houses. Also, we oppose it if there is not city sewer for them to hook onto." Those are not issues that we consider with the zoning, but it is read into the record so they know. And it's Gary and Sammy Blevins at 3251 Clyde Lane.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission. Be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
The rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance to go to council on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go back to R-20-17 CL George &amp; Sons, west of Jean George Boulevard, south side of West Sunsets, from A-1 to C-5 presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, Nathan Street with McClellan Engineers. Proposed request is to rezone approximately 11 acres from A-1 to C-5, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations, encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists, encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale retail services and office areas where the highest volumes and greatest utility demands can be served.
Any questions or comments from the audience or on the phone? To the commission? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Sorry, Ben, go ahead.
Call for vote by Mr. Peters?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Rezoning passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, R-20-20 Harold &amp; Maddie Griffith Family Trust, Washington County Parcel, 815-30894-000, from A-1 to C-2 presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason.
Chairman, Jason, have a vote with ESI?
On this map is the northern east, the northern 1.3 acres. Not the whole piece is going to C-2. Just to clarify that on the map.
Actually, what's shown is the address 4022.
Yeah, but it was a portion of the whole piece.
It's currently being split.
Into three parcels.
So it's that piece right there is the proposed C-2 zone.
Okay.
Wait, wait, I got to make sure I'm on the right one.
Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan recommends, indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and improper locations, encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood community and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Call for the vote? Call for the vote? Was that, I didn't see who called that. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, a call for it. Call for the vote by Mr. David.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Recused.
We had eight and one recused. The rezoning passes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance. It goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you. Next section is for conditional use, C-20-13 Roger Tru... Forgive me if I pronounce it Trugillo, 8930 Cary Smith Road. This is a conditional use for manufactured home presented by Roger Trugillo.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just asking for permission to put up a manufactured home for my mom in a couple acres that I own. It's a brand new, medium-sized mobile home. I just wanted to keep her close to me.
Okay, staff comments?
How many acres do you have there?
Five.
Okay. Which would allow in an A-1 zone, two acres for each individual housing unit on there, so it's allowed as, I mean, he's got enough space and that kind of stuff to do it. It's just a question of whether or not this is the type of housing that... Are you intending for it to be permanent or only for... I don't want to say this, as long as your mother is still with you, you want to hurt that location?
Yes.
And after that, or do you intend to leave it there for that timeframe?
After I will go. I might, one of my kids might build a home in there or something.
Okay. Building a home is different, putting the manufactured home there. Do you intend for it to be permanent? Or is it there for an extended time until you're, until you don't need it for your mother?
Just for extended time.
Okay, so it's, he's looking at it for a permanent location.
Any other comments?
You've made arrangements to get water to it, correct?
Yes.
And you have a septic system permit for a separate septic system for the mobile home?
Yes.
Okay.
I already have the purchase done.
Okay. As billing inspection, have you all inspected any of this yet? I'm sorry?
We don't have a permit out at this time.
Okay, you would need to apply for a permit even though it's already...
What we have to do is get...
Okay, okay.
So it's electrical permit?
Right, and then...
We don't inspect the...
You inspect the water connection?
Just the water connection.
And see that there's a septic system approval and the electrical that's attached to it? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
If it has gas, a gas inspection too?
It's just electric.
Okay.
I was just making sure that that was heard.
Yeah.
For everyone online, so, okay. Any other comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
No, thanks.
Okay, to the commission? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Mueller.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Eiler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Conditional use passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next section is on plaits, replats, final plaits. We have a preliminary plat, 20-03, The Crossings, west side of Jean George Boulevard, west side of West Sunset Avenue presented by McClellan Engineering.
Hello again, Nathan Street with McClellan Engineers. Brief summary of the project, same 11 acres. We are proposing to create about 1,100 feet of private streets, a regional detention pond, and the creation of three developable lots.
Rick, do you have the plat loaded? Okay, no, okay.
Approximately three at this time.
Thank you. Staff comments?
We need the legal description and the parcel number on the cover sheet. I think you've already done that. And engineering, are there any issues as far as you're concerned?
No, no issues on this one.
Is that it? Okay. Any questions or comments? To the commission?
This is a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler?
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Letter of pass passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item, large scale, L twenty dash fifteen, The Peaks at Springdale, Phase Two and Three, west side of North Thompson, north of Cooper Drive, presented by Craft and Toll.
This is Daniel Wells, Craft and Toll Associate.
Want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, this is, this is an extension or an addition to the Phase One fixed apartment project on Cooper Drive up in the north part of Springdale. We, we can be two additional phases, an addition of. Six additional buildings, three in each phase. I can't remember the exact unit number. We have received staff comments. We did receive a staff comment, and we don't have any objections to any of them.
Rick, do you have the layout for it? I think you've got it in your packet. Does everybody have a copy of it in their packet?
Yeah.
The only comments that we have left is all comments from utility companies and other city departments that must be addressed prior to approval, the construction plans, underground utilities excluding twelve K and above utility lines, and we are making a recommendation that bike racks be a great addition to this property, given the size of the campus and the internal walkways and the short distances to the Rose Bakerian Way. Engineering, are there any comments on the peaks?
No comments from engineering.
And we do not have an issue with A, the bike racks. We will do that as part of our package.
Okay.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Be a motion to move forward, correct?
Yes.
Motion made.
Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mueller?
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Large scale passes nine zero.
And I would suggest if you haven't, if you haven't been out there, go out there and look at it, because it's a, it's a nice-looking apartment complex.
Thank you. Next section is Board of Adjustments. We have B twenty dash twenty-two, Josh and Jennifer Fortenberry, thirty-eight oh eight Valley View Drive, variance for deviation aside setback from twenty feet to ten feet, presented by Josh Fortenberry.
Yeah. Hey, how are y'all?
Good.
So what we're wanting to do is build a shop building for personal use on the west side of our property. It'd be the northwest corner, and rather than the twenty-foot setback as required for areas zoned A one, we're requesting a ten-foot variance for, my glasses are fogging up, for drainage purposes, reduce the amount of dirt work, and for aesthetics to keep it tucked behind the trees. And that's about it.
What size is shop building?
We hadn't decided yet fully. Probably, we're looking at a twenty-four by thirty-six, not much bigger than that.
And what's the height, do you know?
The height would be a nine-foot wall with a four-twelve pitch. And it, the, the lay of the land from west to east drops grade, and so I wanna try to avoid building a mountain to build it on. I will have to do some dirt work, but wanted to try to, the further out you get, the steeper the drop.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't have any. Ed, do y'all have any? Nope.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Austin?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Miss variance passes nine zero.
You'll have to get with your permit from the building inspection when you get ready to start.
Okay, so talk to them and they'll. Yes, ma'am.
Will there be any grading plan or grading permit that will be needed, Kate?
About how much area are you planning to disturb? Under half an acre, I would assume?
Oh, yeah, it would be around eight to a thousand square foot area.
Okay, so you can get with the engineering department, we can discuss it further, but there will be a small-scale agreement just for stormwater purposes, just saying that you won't track sediment out into the street, and, you know, you'll clean up after yourself.
Okay. And so which department do I need to speak with on that?
Engineering.
Engineering.
Engineering. And then when I apply for the building permit, they'll, they'll know that I get the variance, or I'll need to supply them?
Yeah, no, they'll know.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, B twenty dash twenty-three, Victor Barrios, two twenty-five Stevens Street, variance for deviation front setback from twenty-two feet to fourteen feet, presented by Victor Barrios.
I'm sorry, can you come to the mic? We can hear you. Sorry.
Mr. Barrios' assistant stopped by, and he insisted he wanted to come in person. He should be here shortly.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go to the next item, B twenty dash twenty-four, Dustin and Krista Humphrey, thirty-nine twenty-nine Orleans Avenue, variance for deviation aside setback from eight feet to five feet, presented by Dustin Humphrey. Is Dustin online? Okay.
We're just gonna go see if we've got anybody out there.
Just seeing if I covered this last one yet. I don't think we did.
Barrios, we're gonna have to come back to him if we don't find.
Cover that one?
Yeah, no, we didn't do that.
Hello.
Hi.
Mr. Barrios, this is Mr. Barrios.
Okay, so we're back to B twenty dash twenty-three, Victor Barrios, two twenty-five Stevens Street, variance for deviation front setback from twenty-two feet to fourteen feet. You want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, sir. The property that we purchased to build a home, the, after we did the survey, it ended up being smaller, much, much smaller than the first time when we checked the size of the property. So, once we started doing the footings, the inspector came in, and he requested me to do a survey, so that's when we did the survey, and that's when we found out that the property was much smaller than we thought at the beginning. Oh, when they sold it to us, they told us, they gave us a dimension and all that stuff, you know, so. And now, we had to undo the footing and bury everything and wait and see if I can get a variance for it. I also spoke with the inspector, and the inspector says, you know, if you don't get the variance, you won't be able to build here anything, because they require at least twenty-four feet wide for me to build something in there. And if I don't get the variance, I won't be able to fit a home that is twenty-four wide.
And basically, this is a lot that has two fronts?
Yes, ma'am, it's a, it's a corner lot.
Okay, which street, you're asking for the variance on the Stevens Street side?
Yes, ma'am.
And the house will actually face onto?
Stevens.
Stevens.
Yes, ma'am.
That front. You will still have your thirty feet on the Cisco Avenue side?
Yes, ma'am.
Which makes it line up with the, the houses that are already there?
Even if we get the variance, we're gonna be lining up with all the other houses.
Right, I would, yeah, I was just, I was giving you that. It will allow it to, to line, the, the moral of this story is you need to have your survey done before you come and ask your variance for it first place. I think he will not do that again.
It will happen to me again, I will not.
Yes, okay.
Is it for the?
It's for the front on Stevens side to reduce it from, well, he got it reduced down to twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
And now he's asking it to go from twenty-two to fourteen. It was thirty, it's going from thirty to fourteen on that front side because it's a corner lot.
Is that because the actual structure itself forces us to help as far as the drive and things like that, too?
The structure.
It's the, it's the overhang of the structure. It's not, and, and actually, it doesn't give you enough room to park a vehicle on that side.
I have a garage on it. Yes, sir, yes.
The garage is off the Cisco side?
No, 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 I'm sorry, in Stevens. The garage will be in Stevens.
That's not gonna give you enough space. They have two parking spaces in front of the house on that side.
I can possibly move the garage back, because the way that we set up the floor plan now, the garages line up with the house in the front, and we have like six more feet that we can move the garage back.
Okay, that's an issue you'll have to work out with building inspection to be able to have your two parking spaces.
Or I can move it to Cisco if, if we have to. To Tom, okay, perfect. Yes, ma'am, I will.
So you have to understand that you don't have room, if this variance is granted, to park vehicles between the, the structure and the street on Stevens side.
Yes, I will consult with Mr. Tom Everest, and then we'll decide where to build the garage after that.
Okay.
Is he also gonna have to have sidewalk variance?
He has to build a sidewalk with it.
And you're gonna, you're gonna be putting a sidewalk in?
I believe I was gonna pay or something to the.
Make payment in lieu of?
Yes.
And he can do that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, he can do that, too, without you all having to take action, because there's not any sidewalks over there.
No, none.
Someday with a.
Yes.
Pay for it to school or something, we can put some sidewalks in that neighborhood. That was the plan previously that didn't get worked out, but.
Just wanting to try to avoid any other, you having to come back in again on that one. So on this variance, you're clear that this is based off of the overhang?
Yes, sir. I, we measure it countless times to make sure what we need to get.
And we just wanna make sure, and, and that whole piece on it, okay. Any other staff comments?
So it's a reduction really from thirty to fourteen. He got twenty-two to start with, we're going down to fourteen, so it's thirty to fourteen, okay?
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
I have a question. I'm just curious how we got all the way to this point. How do we get a building permit and get it built? And, and then notice this after footings are done?
I can't answer that question for you. We'll let Ed.
The city doesn't do land review or site review on residential things that we're working on. They're basically grassing the building, so we have to find out the extra four inches.
So when they go out there, and, and that's when they check it, when they get out there?
Peyton, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think I'm good. I, I missed, I actually missed it because I had my volume turned down, I'm sorry, but.
Ed, Ed needs to pick up the microphone and talk into it.
Probably need to turn it down.
It's not turned on.
Basically, we, on single-family dwellings, we don't require N D engineering on the site or the, or architectures on the buildings, and because of that, we don't see them until we go do an inspection. So in this case, our inspector went out there and said, you're awful close to the street, you might wanna get a survey, and they got a variance. And then we said, you're still awful close to the street, and then they said, oh, maybe you need to get a survey, and when they got the survey, they found out they were too close to the street.
Thank you, Ed. Any other questions from the commission? Let's be a call for the vote. We have a call for the vote by Mr. Peters?
Tompkins?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
The variance passes nine zero?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You still need to get with Ed?
Yes.
Or with Tom and work out the parking spaces?
I will survey anything above my own.
Thank you. All right, next item, B twenty dash twenty-four, Dustin and Krista Humphrey, thirty-nine twenty-nine Orleans Avenue, variance for deviation aside setback from eight feet to five feet, presented by Dustin Humphrey. Yeah, if you'll come up to the mic?
Good evening.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to accomplish here?
We're putting a pool on the east side of our house. What limited space we have kinda goes into that eight-foot standoff from the fence right there between properties.
Staff comments?
Okay, and you verified there's no utility easement on that side?
There is not, ma'am.
Looking at your survey, you know there's no easement?
Yes.
Okay, okay, 'cause you can't, you can't get a variance as long, if there is a, an existing easement, it would have to be. The drawing that, that the pool company submitted is very confusing, because it's upside down on the paper.
Sorry about that.
It really, it really throws us off to, to, to start.
Yeah, the utilities run from east to west along the backside of my house, which, where the pool is gonna be, it's not gonna be anywhere close to any utilities right there.
Any ground pool?
Yes, sir.
The fencing that you have that exists already, the elevation of that fencing is what?
The north and east side is a six-foot fence, the rear side is a ten-foot fence. I'm also putting in a cast iron fence that runs north to south on the east side of my house to kinda block off that entire area, so.
Well, and there are pool fencing requirements for pools anyway. So he'll have to meet the, the standard pool requirements. It's only four foot, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other staff comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
I do have the last receipt, saying the school district received it.
She'll need to have that, yeah. Okay, it's to the commission? Let's be a call for the vote, call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Covert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Variance passes nine zero. Thank you. That's it?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.
You, too. Next item, B twenty dash twenty-five, Harold and Mattie Griffith Trust, forty twenty-two South Fifty-Sixth Street, variance for deviation, a thirty-five-foot front building setback.
I'm sorry, is there like a piece of paper I need to take to Burton or?
No, we'll, we'll send you a letter indicating this has been approved that you can have to take to them. Sorry.
Thank you very much, sorry.
ESI.
ESI, yeah.
ESI is the presenter on this one.
Okay.
Thank you, this is.
Hang on. Jason, before you start, we rezoned, you voted to rezone this property earlier, and I've talked with Philip, he reminded me, they, there's some time constraints on this. So, Patsy, could we move this up?
That's your call.
Then, yes, we can.
If you allow it to be on the agenda, it's your call. Otherwise, it doesn't.
I knew we'd done it before, but I don't, I always ask because I don't wanna put a strain on your staff, so. So this'll, isn't that right, Debbie? All right, so we will, so the rezoning will be next to.
The nine, yeah, the nine, yes, okay. I knew that was coming when you talked to the mayor, I assumed it was all covered, because he's the one that tells us we can do that, okay?
Debbie was wanting to know which one this was.
Which, which rezoning?
The Griffith.
It's R twenty dash twenty.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's the one that'll go next time, yeah.
Okay. Hi, Jason.
Yeah.
So, just a, just a brief, a brief history on this.
Turn that one back off.
This parcel. Parcel. So the Griffiths currently live at forty twenty-two. And with the Fifty-Sixth Street widening project. The right-ofway encroaches in their yard. And in this case creates. In this case creates almost a zero setback. However. With the process of right-ofway acquisition and how. And how required right-ofway is. since it is, under their, under their, uh... Funding. Funding. There's a twenty-five foot utility easement on the west side of Fifty-Six Street. Which, which is included inside the right-of-way. So their house will not be, a foot off the sidewalk. It's gonna be twenty-five feet off the sidewalk. In this case, the right-of-way line is the western limit of the easement. So, that's what created this situation, we're, we're asking for, that variance.
Basically, it's a situation that we created because of the expansion of Fifty-Six Street, and they're coming in and asking for a, a variance for this on a situation that the city's created.
And is that variance from the center of the street or would...
Well, acquisitions from the center of the street to include the additional right-of-way needed to make this a boulevard, and then that's what created the setback problem for the existing house. It is my understanding that there may be others on Fifty-Six Street that we've created some variance situations. I was of the assumption we were going to file all those together and not make the property owners come in individually because we're creating the problem. This one, I think, needs to move faster than that process has come to the city for the rest of them, and that's why they're here asking for it now. But hardship is being created by the widening of the street, not anything that the property owner themselves did.
Yeah, I remember us talking about this, also including relocation of fencing for other properties and things like that as well, so...
Yeah, and, and I think it is the, I hope it's the way we'll go forward is to get all these done at one time, so each individual property owner is not created and have to come in and do it on a regular basis. It just wasn't done in time. And I don't know if it's actually been acquired, if the right-of-way's actually been acquired. Philip's saying yes, it's actually been acquired, so the hardship already exists, okay?
So how will that be presented in the future? Doing all those at once?
Well, what we anticipated was gonna happen is that engineering would bring us a package with all the property owners on there. We would do one advertising to say, because the city's the one that's causing the problem, and grant all those variances at one time, so we don't have to come back and do them individually. I don't know, for whatever reason, that hasn't been done yet.
And, and the reason why I'm asking that is, is that, will this one, when that's done, will this particular property not be included in that and, and still be, okay?
Yeah, we'll make sure that this one gets pulled out because they had to do it separately.
Okay, because otherwise that could be confusing down the road, and that whole piece on it, okay? Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
During the acquisition, was the, uh, the fact that this variant, or that this variance would be required, was that taken into account? Basically, was the structure purchased when the act, when the right-of-way was acquired? Or was that not done?
The, the structure wasn't purchased. They didn't have an economic, an economic remnant. They just purchased the right-of-way in the, the utility easement that was required, and that's what created the need for the variance because the existing structure doesn't meet the setback.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Be a call for the vote?
Vote.
Have a call for vote by Mr. Covert?
David?
Yes.
Mueller?
Recuse.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Upton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
That's it.
All right, we have eight yes and one recuse, the variance passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning directors report?
The amendment to Chapter one twelve on the development plan procedures was approved by city councilor. We are in the process of making sure everybody knows that. The biggest change being you need to have a pre-development conference with staff before you submit your large skills, and I think the ones that we have coming in, we've done all of those, and I think that really will help us to address some of these issues on the front ends. The rest of it is kind of clearing up the language and the number of, of copies and that kind of stuff. It will go into effect thirty days after the council meeting, so the next submission cycle for sure will be the ones that have to comply with it. They approved the replat of Lot one and two of Hemet of Business Center, the final plat for Hilton Place subdivision, the rezoning for that little triangle for Williams Tractor,